Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Commissioners' meeting. We begin our meeting with a moment of silence, and I would ask in a special way that we remember a very brave and dedicated county employee and consider her family and friends and coworkers at this difficult time in the passing of Brenda Napparella, who was, you know, a very long-term employee of ours and just a wonderful person who passed this morning. And let someone whom we all felt in very high regard. Allow for this moment of silence at your honor. Thank you. Please rise to the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, go to the public comment part of our program this morning, and we'll ask folks from the Gap. We have two representatives this morning. Colonel, would you please introduce...
Good morning.
Mr. Guest.
Good morning, everyone. Lieutenant Colonel Waltman for Fort Ene Town Gap. We have information on the activities and events back at the Gap. This is, of course, a set day with the passage, but also this will be my last day attending meeting, relinquishing the duties and the honor that I've had to represent Fort Ene Town Gap. And Colonel, I think there's some commander here who has given you information. I think it's been a great, great relationship over the past maybe two years that I've been coming here, and it's just been beneficial to me personally. But Mr. David Wiseman, the Deputy Base Operations Manager, will be taking over those responsibilities. So let me turn it over to him with what's going on.
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. To follow in the story, tradition of Colonel Waltman with the Back of the Gap brief, which we intend, from our command level, to continue that with at least myself into the far future. We'll keep coming once a month to our neighbors and friends and partners and give you an update on our activities. Upcoming live-fire training, which is the most noticeable off our post, starting tomorrow through the 10th, we're going to have demolitions training. Then, again, on the 12th of July, we're going to have demolitions training. We're going to be shooting mortars from the 20th through the 21st. Also, on the 21st, we'll be firing 25-millimeter Bradley Fighting Vehicles. Then we'll have a short lull to the 27th, and on the 27th through the 29th of July, we'll have demolitions training. Levels of training troops on the post, right now, we're coming back from our 4th of July holiday lull. We have about approximately 1,500 troops training on the post currently. It'll surge up this weekend to 4,500 troops, and next week, we'll be back at our normal summertime training load of about 6,500 troops. With that, you'll be seeing increased flight activity within the normal parameters out of the Bureau Army Airfield. This weekend, this past weekend, we had a very successful butterfly walks. We had two of them. We brought about 500 people from literally all over the world to beautiful Lebanon Valley and uptake of our fritillary butterfly population. For anybody that's interested, this coming weekend, and gosh, go back, this Friday and this Saturday, we're going to have two more butterfly walks. They start at 10:00 in the morning, get there to fill out some paperwork about anywhere from about 9:00 on. You could go on a walk and see what is turning to be a really great showcase of our environmental stewardship that we have with the Blue Mountain, the Kidde Tenny Ridge, and how dear we hold that, and we'll continue to protect that. Of note, the next phase of our gate closure plan, which is already in effect, where we're channelizing the ways you can get onto Fort Ene Town Gap, the next phase will be on the 18th of July. You can still come on the Gap via Fisher Avenue on both ends and also on 443. Speaking of 443, the Pindot project to replace the bridge, which is 443, going north up towards Moonshine Church, that has been delayed a little bit to, it's going to start this week. We thought it would have already started, but if they're going to install one of the one-lane traffic, where we're going to divert traffic over onto our tank trail, they have to finish paving the tank trail. So we'll divert it, and it's going to have a decorate traffic light up there. So pending any of your questions, that's all we have, and we thank you for the opportunity to come do this.
I would just like to wish you a happy and long retirement, and thank you for being part of this strengthening of our partnership with the Gap, shining a light on the activities there, but also reminding us the vital nature of the national security protection that in the training and the, all the activities that go on there, it's, we know that it's vital to us, and yet, we appreciate also the media's work in shining that light to our constituents so they can appreciate the 17,000 acres and billions of dollars and assets that the Gap is, and remind everyone of that. So, thank you.
As I said, I've said many times in the meetings I go to, it's been a pleasure and an honor here, especially growing up in, here in Lebanon County, and then eventually working at Fort Ene Town Gap, hearing the artillery fire as a young boy in Cornwall, and then eventually coming out there and then reporting here on what we're doing out there. It's been a great learning experience. I've learned of the dedication and the commitment of the local municipalities and everyone, every organization that I've become involved with here through this role in the understanding of the value of Fort Ene Town Gap to the whole Lebanon Valley. So it's been my pleasure and my learning experience. So I'm coming away here with a greater understanding of Lebanon County, Lebanon Valley, than everybody else that is involved in this. Thank you, Colonel.
I do have a question. The normal flight pattern for training, how wide is that?
The flight patterns that we do, there's two types of flight patterns. You have the higher-level flight patterns, which is training above 4,000 feet. Those flight routes predominantly go out of Bureau Army Airfield, and they go really all up and down the Lebanon Valley. The importance to us of the Blue Mountain or the Kidde Tenny Ridge and the St. Anthony's Wilderness is that is the only available place that we can go and do darkened skies, where there's obviously not many people that live on that side of the mountain over the St. Anthony's Wilderness. There is where we do the low-level routes. So, to answer your question, it gets quite complicated how routes actually go over and above, but everything that we're flying down in this side of the mountain in Lebanon Valley tends to be over 4,000 feet. It's just helicopters are very noisy as far as aircraft.
I just was curious, because like in West London, for instance, I see them fly over, so I didn't know how far south...
They actually range way up to Berks County is one of the turnaround points. They use a system of what they call landing zones, which tend to be small airports that Pennsylvania has scattered about. A lot of it is that pilots are doing, training themselves to follow instruments, and usually the instruments for air navigation tend to be around airports. So that's usually the term for their flight. And then they come back, and they're doing various aspects of their training certification while they're doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Duncan.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next presenters for public comment, Anne Pinka and Mike Schroeder. And friends.
Actually, because some of the political making that Pam can go first, that's not a problem.
Would you please take a moment to introduce yourselves for the benefit of those who may not know.
Okay. He's not home.
Gotcha.
All right. My name is Pam Bishop. I'm associated with a group called Concerned Citizens of Lebanon County, and I'm here to give you an update on the Sunoco pipeline, proposed project in Lebanon County. Do you want to all introduce first, or...
No, we'd like to. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Anne Pinka. I'm President of Lebanon Pipeline Awareness and President of North Lebanon County.
My name is Michael Schroeder of Lebanon Miltownship, and I'm here wearing two hats, one, the vice president of Lebanon Pipeline Awareness, and secondly, I'd like to address you as co-president of the water watershed association.
Very good.
Thank you. And I am a resident of West Cornwall, Pennsylvania. I would like to remind you that we were here in March of May for one of your meetings, and we made a request at that time in connection with the other pipeline project, the Lebanon Sunrise, which is proposed by Williams, by Mr. Trenton. At that time, we were here to ask you to write a letter to the Department of Environmental Protection regarding permits that were intended at that agency, and you were kind enough to send that letter. I am here today to ask you to send a similar letter to the Department of Environmental Protection in Pennsylvania with regard to the Sunoco applications for permits in connection with their construction project, which is a 300-mile, two-twinn pipelines across Southern Pennsylvania, called Mariner East 1 and Mariner East 2 Pennsylvania Pipeline Project. Sunoco had filed applications to cross waterways and wetlands in the county and over 16 counties in Pennsylvania, through which the project is to be constructed. Those applications were filed last August, almost a year ago, and went through a series of reviews by the state agency. The state agency found the applications deficient. Sunoco re-submitted them essentially three times, and the most recent application was dated May 30, and DEP has now noticed in the public bulletin that they have accepted those applications for review. They call it a completeness review. Now, they will enter into a technical review of the application. And that notice in the PA bulletin that occurred just recently had a public comment period. We believe that the project is so complex, perhaps even more complex, and lengthy than one associated with sunrise. In Lebanon County, it will cross numerous streams and tributaries of those streams, as well as some wetlands, across the 19.7 miles that the project is supposed to be constructed in Lebanon County, and including six municipalities in Lebanon County. We would request that you ask DEP for an extension of public comment to be at least 90 days for the public to review the documents, and for a public hearing to be held on that application for Lebanon County, a public hearing to be held in Lebanon County, so that the public can comment. And I would just add to the complexity of this application and the number of streams that they're crossing, proposing to cross in Pennsylvania, is that they're still amending their application. We have received notice that they just amended it July 2nd, so it's still a work in progress, and it's very difficult for the public to follow everything, and that's why we request the 90-day public comment period.
Just to be safe on dates, are you asking for a 30-day extension, or what end date would you be looking for, so we can be sure we have that accurate?
Thank you for asking. The DEP had proposed a 60-day public comment period, and their public notice in the PA bulletin that may take us to August 24. What we are asking is another 30 days for a total of 90 days. Thank you. Do whatever that means.
September 24.
September.
Okay. That's good. Before you go any further, would you like to entertain a motion to ask for an extension of the review period and also a public meeting? Would you like to do that?
Ask me.
I'll second it.
So we've been seconding that we addressed the request of an extra 30 days for review and also a public hearing to follow after the review period?
Yes.
So everybody has a chance. Okay. That's the motion. And comment or question before we vote? On the favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No. So moved. Okay, part one.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Anne Pinka.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. I really just have some updates to give you, but I did have a question as far as the videotaping of these meetings, because I understand you started doing that. Are those posted anywhere or accessible anywhere? Because I looked on your website and couldn't find it, and maybe that's just me, so...
On the main page of the county website, there's a YouTube link on the bottom right.
Ah, okay.
Click on that, and then I'll take that permission.
Excellent, okay.
I only saw one video posted.
Yeah, there's one video on it at this point.
Okay, wonderful. But thank you, I was not looking at it.
We're in our infancy.
We're doing well today.
Okay, great. And thank you so much for participating. I think that's a great thing to have. We appreciate it very much. All right, just some updates on the Atlantic Sunrise, because it's a long and confusing process, and just updating where we're at. I'm sure you're probably aware, we have the draft environmental impact state meetings. This is for the PERC, Part of the Process of Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Those meetings were all held in June. The one for area was June 14 in Ample and LEC. There were a lot of great comments made that raised a lot of questions. Those have all been submitted to PERC. I didn't know if the commissioners had submitted a comment at all.
You did personally.
You did personally, okay. And I just wanted to mention that if you still wanted to, you could. It's past the actual official deadline, but at the meeting, because so many people have requested an extension for the deadline, PERC was not willing to grant a formal extension, but the official in charge of the meeting did say and encourage people to submit comments even after the deadline date that they would still be looking at. So just to get that out there. Then, moving on to DEP Department of Environmental Protection, as you know, and thanks so much for your help with that, they did extend the deadline for the one-applied border approach and obstruction permits. And just a reminder, that date is until August 1st. I was wondering if you had received any notice of the hearing, because it was my understanding that they were going to be hearing, but we have a current date. Do you have received any? Okay. Wow. And those comments, the reason that's so important for this process is because those one-applied permits fell under the 401 Water Quality Certification, which DEP actually already approved, which is hard to understand how they do that before these, you know, other applications are even in. And as a reminder, there's three groups that have filed appeals about water certification improvement. Now, the last part is the Architorg Engineers of 404 application. And just to make you aware, Lebanon Pipeline Awareness joined eight other organizations in requesting a revision of public notice because there were errors in it, asking for a new public comment period because the original, I think, closed or was close to it, and also a public hearing. So just wanted to let you know that that's what we've been doing. I have a CD for you and a lot of these related documents, including our comments, just really for your information. I'll give that to you. If there's any you want to post on the website, that would be great too, but that's up to your discretion and one deal. And that's all I have, unless you have any news for us.
No, just to follow on your comment about the videotaping, on the back of your agendas today, there is a directory at the bottom, just to let people know how to get to it.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you so much for the reference.
There you go. Right in. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, picking up where Anne left off, regarding the Lebanon County Commissioners' website, I see that some additional items have been added to the pipeline tag, for which we thank you.
Newsletters.
I'm sorry?
Newsletters, a couple of them.
Yeah. And again, we would like to ask, and we'd be happy to facilitate this, that the items be organized in a way that is more sort of reader-friendly, that they be organized in reverse chronological order, in other words, the most recent items on top, and they include brief synopses, a sentence or two, a brief abstract to let the public know what they're about, the date, you know, whose writing's room, and so on. And we'd be happy to assist in that endeavor. So I want to thank you for updating that website and ask that we continue to move forward with pipeline information. Then, switching hats and addressing you as co-president of the water watershed association, I sent a letter to the Commissioners last week on behalf of the watershed association expressing our concerns about the proposed development up here on this 4.5-acre parcel in east Lebanon. The concern expressed in the letter was regarding flood control and flood mitigation, because as you know, this is right at the headwaters of Quiddie Creek, and we already have severe flooding issues downstream of the Pisa site, as you know. So we are very concerned about flooding and the implications of this commercial development on flooding downstream. And then a second concern that was raised and wasn't included in the letter, but I'd like to address here, is water quality, because again, you know, this commercial development will be drained right into the headwaters of Quiddie, and we want to make sure that water quality is not impaired or further degraded by this development. I do have a question about how much of the Quiddie headwaters actually reside in this 4.5-acre parcel. I had a hard time sort of discerning that from Google Maps.
There's a map that we were given, so if this is the wetland, this is the piece that they want, and then we would also retain this piece.
Okay, and the county will be, it is proposed that the county will sell this property to the developer, is that correct?
This piece.
Okay.
Good eye, brother. There, we had the wetlands delineated at some point, I don't know if it was 10 years ago or how recently, but all of the delineation is on the south side of Metro Drive. So none of what's being proposed is in the wetland delineation. I know there's some, I've heard some people say that that's the headwaters, some feel the headwaters are up further toward Short Road, you know, maybe it's all the headwaters.
Right.
But I don't believe any of this parcel would be considered to be part of any of that, since there's no wetland on this piece.
Okay.
So it's all in the north side of Metro Drive, the parcel.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I guess what we'd like to ask, again, on behalf of the watershed association, as we move forward, I know that there's a lot of permitting, and there's a lot of steps and hurdles to pass as this project moves forward, I'd like to ask that the watershed association have a seat at the table as we, as this moves forward, be informed of various meetings and correspondence as it moves forward. So is that clear?
It's clear. It's clear, but I don't know, I'm just wondering how that can be accommodated, but we can talk about that.
And then, relatedly, I wonder if we, I'm sorry.
You want to address?
No, I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, this is a proposed and could go over a long period of time as to whether or not the land transfer actually takes place, because they're doing their study to see if it's feasible and, you know, whether or not they're going to have, you know, a use for this land. So I understand your concern, but I wouldn't get too concerned initially. And certainly, you know, it'll be public information if they come back and, you know, they do want to purchase the land, then, you know, I think you would have to activate your stance at that point. But until that happens, I, you know, I wouldn't concern yourself too much with it.
No, I know it's a long-term process, and it would likely take years, but again, just to, you know, signal our concern, because, you know, we learn about these projects from the newspaper basis, and this kind of brings up a real... I'm wondering if there's a way for the county, maybe through Lebanon County planning, to develop a more systematic way to inform the public about projects that have watershed implications? Because again, we just sort of read about this stuff in the paper and say, oh, they have a 4.5-acre parcel that they're selling at the Quiddie headwater. And there ought to be a mechanism by which the public can be sort of routinely informed of projects that have substantial watershed implications. The other one that comes to mind is the Clear Springs Crossing Mall down just west of Randall. That too has significant watershed implications, and the public is not, has not sort of, there's no way for the public to sort of be informed about that. So maybe we can collaborate and work together to figure out a way for Lebanon County planning or some other entity within the county administrative structure to, you know, develop a more routinized way to inform the public about projects that have substantial watershed implications.
Mike, one of the situations we run into is that the rules are formed by municipalities. The county has no authority over those municipalities, and while we do administer some of the laws they make, not for all the municipalities. So that's one hurdle we face. Another hurdle we face is when there are real estate deals, a lot of them are confidential, and we're not allowed to talk about them, if it would directly involve the county, until such time as the potential purchaser chooses to make it public. The third thing that I would like to say is that you can follow our agendas. Kathy does a good job of posting them on the Commissioners' website, at least 24 hours ahead and sometimes more. Likewise, for the MPO meeting, which some of the things like Clear Spring Road Crossing, that will be on the planning's website. I think that they create our MPO agenda. I didn't look at that one, but I'm pretty sure they posted there. So those are some ways you can keep yourself informed. It's up there 24/7, but we do have hurdles in addition to keeping you informed. We're doing the best we can at this point. If laws change, we can do better, you know, but we have to respect our boundaries that we're assigned to by the state.
Okay, thank you.
Just have one follow-up comment to the parcel, the offer of the parcel. Number one, I did make Aspen Hill aware of the concern of the watershed association, so I passed that on to them, so they're aware. At some point, you know, they get to a point where they would bring it to the table or make that up or whatever they could. But as was mentioned, I do expect sort of a long, quiet period while, you know, from our side of things anyway, while they've been given the opportunity to research this and see if it's feasible and so on. And I don't anticipate having a lot of, if any, sit downs with them while they go ahead and do their, you know, their research. So, but if that comes up and it would impact the watershed, I'll certainly make them aware of that, and so.
All right.
But I did make them aware of it.
Thank you.
I did have one follow-up that I may. My understanding, and Pam is the attorney from DEP, she would know better, but my understanding of the stormwater law would be that on the developed parcel, by law, they must retain the stormwater on that site and may not discharge into the wetland. So I just wanted to reassure you that is not something that would be allowed, and I would object to that, and I'm sure the watershed would speak up at that point too. But impervious surface on driveways, rain gardens and all, you know, those are all things that, when a new business is going in, many of them are incorporating because they know it sells good with the public, but also it's to their financial advantage, because some of those things are less expensive than creating just big dry dams.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you. Would you copy South Lebanon Township, what you're...
South Lebanon Township.
I was just, I was asking, you know, that would keep them as well.
because they know it sells good with the public, but also it's to their financial advantage because some of those things are less expensive than creating just big dry dams.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you copy South Lebanon Township, what you're looking for?
South Lebanon Township.
I was asking, you know, that would keep them as well.
Okay.
Delighted.
Okay, thank you.
We have our treasurer, Sally Ewan, you need a minute. I'm sorry. I'm distracted. Yeah, we'd like to, before we proceed, accept the minutes of our last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
It's a little bit second, and then additions, deletions, or corrections. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, so moved. Did you, did I neglect to ask if you had questions, but we're good?
Oh, we're good.
All right, so.
Okay, we had receipts from seven five and seven six. One million, six hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty cents. Brings us to a total of cash of three million, one hundred thousand, eight hundred, seventy-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. We had expenditures this week of two million, forty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seven cents. Our tax claim right now is seven thousand, two hundred, ninety-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, leaving as a cash balance of one million, forty-five thousand, nine hundred, eighteen dollars and sixty-three cents.
Any questions for Sal? Not all in favor of the motion?
So moved.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Motion is second, but all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved, thank you, Sal.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
Around me.
Thank you. There are special guests here this morning. We can ask if anyone else wants to advance, it's fine, we're good. All right, good morning. Phyllis, would you like to introduce yourself?
I would. I'm Phyllis Holtery, the administrator for Community Action Partnership. And to my left, I have Diane DeKinn, who is the administrative assistant. And to my right is Sandy Wong, the director of social services. And Diane has been with the county for 25 years. Started off as a clerk and next year advanced to administrative assistant. And she's been with the county for 25 years, and tomorrow is her last day on the job. So we are going to miss Diane every year. She's become the utility player, plugging in the holes, and we have lots of holes to put new plug. But she always arose to the occasion, and I always said, change is good, just keep in mind that change is good, because we've moved them off a lot as an agency over the past 25 years.
Great. Would you like to add anything to our?
Just that it's been a pleasure to work for the county. It certainly was a stabilizing force. Being a single mom and working the hours, benefits, everything was great. And I hope I gave as much to you as you've given to me.
Sure, we did.
Oh, Diane's been great, like I can say anything to her, and like, I need you to do this, and she's like, okay. I'm gonna miss her.
I'm with them as well.
We do have a proclamation which may fill in some of the gaps.
Whereas Diane DeKinn began her career with the County of Lebanon, employed as a general clerk for Community Action Partnership, formerly known as the Human Services Agency on July 8, 1991. Whereas a detail-reended and conscientious employee, Diane has proven to be a valuable asset to the staff with her professionalism when interacting with the public. She maintained loyalty to the goal of the agency, which is to move people from poverty to self-sufficiency in their lives. And whereas throughout her many years of employment, Diane served the county with devotion and commitment, providing integrity to her profession. She performed her duties and responsibilities in a professional manner which reflect great credit upon herself and Lebanon County Government. Whereas on July 9, 2016, Diane will retire as administrative assistant for Community Action Partnership with 25 years of distinguished service. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of all our citizens, unite to thank Diane for her many years of dedicated service. Further, we extend congratulations and best wishes for the most rewarding future and the very best retirement.
I see the motion.
I'll make a motion and we adopt the proclamation as written.
I'll second that with pleasure.
We have motion is second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved.
We also have her 25-year certificate.
That's right, you're gonna miss the.
Tomorrow, tomorrow is 25 years to the day that you started. Well, I invite you personally to come in for mac and cheese.
I can take you up on that.
One of the things that I usually say in orientation with HR people over and over, but is that when we have new employees, we, all right, I tell them that I hope that their last day will be as good as their first day, because that's when their enthusiasm is high and so on. And after 25 years, you're a tribute to that thinking, and we really appreciate the dedication to the county.
Thank you. Your loyalty to the county has not gone unnoticed, so thank you.
Thank you. We have two presentations, one is your 25-year, and then also the certificate that accompanies that, which sort of, tomorrow especially, but. And then we have the proclamation which we just passed as Commissioners. Let's move over here into our photo area. Good guess.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good luck.
Congratulations. Appreciate your service.
Enjoy your retirement.
I'm going to.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
He's back here. Hi, so I'm good to see you.
I'm shocked to see you.
Hi, Mikey, how are you, Mikey?
Good, good.
One deserves a hug.
Happy birthday.
There certainly have a range of emotions today. Introduce yourselves.
Michelle Liedriss, on behalf of Human Resources. Diane Shank, Human Resources. Under personnel transactions, resignations and terminations. Constance Berger, County Clerk C, resignation effective July 8. Ryan Rader, caseworker, ICM, resignation effective July 5. Allison Singer, office manager, resignation effective July 1. Melissa Brandt, office manager, deceased, effective June 19. John Bowman, monitor, resignation effective June 30. Alyssa Brown, casual part-time correctional officer, resignation effective July 1. Shelby Stockman, same time, part-time correctional officer, resignation effective July 4.
Brittany Jones, part-time developmental assistant, second shift, job abandonment, effective July 5. And Brenda Naparella, secretary C, deceased, effective July 7, 2016.
Under FMLA, leave of absence, Harry Wong, Community Action Partnership, six weeks unpaid LOA return due 27. Sharon Cisco, Area Agency, on aging, 60-day unpaid leave of absence, effective June 1.
Would you want Jamie to? Would that be better? Sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Under resignations and terminations.
Motion? You need a motion, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations and terminations as presented.
Second.
I'll second that motion, and I'll also make a, I'm sorry. You want to?
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, and then also make a motion for the FMLA, which she just did as well.
Do we need two or is it just one? Two, two. Well, then we'll do the first one, and then we'll address the other ones. All in favor of the motion to accept the resignations and other changes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. That's no, accept a motion to, and the FMLA, that's it. Sorry. I'm going to second it, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Under changes of status, transfers of motions, Jennifer Vasquez, change of status from general clerk C in the clerk of courts to part-time court clerk in the clerk of clerks, at the rate of $12.10 per hour, effective July 18. Emily Cruz, transferred from general clerk C from the prosecutor's office to secretary D in the public defender's office, at the rate of $870.50 by weekly, effective July 18. Holly McGuire, change of status from clerk practice two in children and youth to clerk practice three, at the rate of $1,181.70 by weekly, effective July 11. Steven Shaker, change of status as from a casual part-time correctional officer for prison to a regular part-time correctional officer, at the rate of $12.68 per hour, effective July 3. Michael Anderson, transferred from the assistant director slash fiscal position in the investigations office to the chief clerk of voter registration, at the rate of $1,923.08 by weekly, effective August 1. And April Nati, promotion from full-time developmental assistant second shift at Renova to full-time program assistant second shift, at the rate of $12.35 per hour, effective July 18.
Make a motion to accept the changes of status as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and we accept those changes. Any comment or question? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved.
Under other transactions, I have a motion to approve Treasurer Sally Ewan's request to have M. Phyllip Arns and M. A. Lemke work in her office for six to eight weeks, effective July 11, as well as have her current staff, including Belinda Spicer, Spicer and Tacks, clean work an additional five hours each per week for the same timeframe if needed to assist fulfill licenses.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and that we approve this motion for additional help for Treasurer Ewan. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, so moved.
EMA would like to hire Gary Verna as hazmat chief, at the rate of $1,397.66 by weekly, effective July 25. The prison would like to hire Jean Cho Mosley as a full-time law clerk. Sorry, PJ would like to hire Jean Cho Mosley as a full-time law clerk, at the rate of $1,268.1 by weekly, effective August 15. District Attorney would like to hire Margaret McConano as a full-time assistant district attorney, at the rate of $1,520.68 by weekly, effective July 25. President Judge Tilok would like to hire Benita Cascarino as a full-time, a part-time DJ clerk, at the rate of $10.89 per hour, effective July 11. And Renova would like to hire Karina Alban San as a casual call developmental assistant, at the rate of $11.56 per hour, effective July 18.
Make a motion to accept the hirings as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, and we accept those hirings. Any comment or question? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that sometimes God lets us walk with angels. And there was a woman who worked in this office, who never had a harsh word for anybody and was the epitome of grace, and we all miss her terribly. And I just want to emphasize that all of the emotions that are being felt are in her honor. And thank you for caring so much about fellow human beings.
Moving on to salary board. Motion to approve all transactions previously set, plus the following. The following three correctional officers are receiving incremental increases. Cheyenne Gettle to the rate of $13.82 per hour, effective July 17. Drew Harris, to the rate of $14.18, effective July 31. And Thomas Taylor, to the rate of $14.18, effective July 31. The following three telecommunicators and EMA will be receiving incremental increases. Daniel Core, Brianna Stangler, and Linda Adams, all at the rate of $18.07 per hour, all affected July, or, excuse me, June 29.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, and we approve the salary board requests. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved.
Mandatory conference seminars, Ellen, Benita, Jessica McTavish, Angelica Maurici, and Maria Almado Hernandez. From children and youth, would like to attend the Making Permanent Connections and Outcomes for Professional Development in Mechanicsburg, July 11, 12, and 13. Mileage, meals, and tools reimbursement, 18 credits mandated by DHS. Sally Mary from probation services would like to attend the juvenile chiefs council meeting in Elk County in July 22. Lodging reimbursement mandated by J.C., J.C. And Bradley Seifert and John Simpson Terry from the sheriff's office would like to attend firearms and control rifle resorption nation in State College, August 15 through the 18, mandated by the PCCV.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and that we approve the mandated requests. Questions? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposition, no. So moved.
Under requested, Julie Shany for planning would like to attend the MS4 workshop, preparing for your experiment application in Harrisburg, July 25, with a $50.00 registration fee and mileage reimbursement.
Would you like to ask an abstention from that?
So moved.
Second. Any questions coming? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Motion carries. Next.
Michelle Liedriss and Leanne Shank, Human Resources, would like to attend the Sharp Regional Discussion Forum in Harrisburg, July 6, $50.00 registration fee and mileage reimbursement.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and that we approve the requested conference. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved, thank you. Good morning, John. Please introduce yourself, and then you may proceed.
Good morning, my name is John Wilson, Director of Emergency Management. Good morning, my name is Commissioner. The reason I'm here today is a proposal from MCM, an insurance firm. They have provided the 901 consultant for emergency management for quite a few years now, and this is a new three-year contract, the sixth September 1st. The total contract cost is $60,000 over three years, $20,000 each year. And they let us quarterly as we receive the money from the 901 fund. The 901 fund from the state pays for the professional services that Mr. Michael Mulgrave, the emergency provider, provides to EMA and 901 to enhance our 901 program. I'm seeing approval for this, or your contract.
Also, would I do a question?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, let's entertain the questions.
John, how much was the contract before? We all are so thrilled with the services provided by MCM, but because we don't bid it, I think we should be transparent as to pricing.
Sure, so the last contract was $47,500. That was the last three-year contract. So it's $60,000 down on the $47.
Are there additional duties that went along with that?
He's providing the new, all the information for the new law, the changes in all that involved. And as PMA upgrades the eligibility list and things like that, he provides all that consulting to us as to where we can best utilize the funds that we receive from the state during our budgeting process in the fall.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say that if there's a consulting service that's worth the money, I think this is one, and certainly, from my standpoint, when they, and I don't serve as liaison to your department, but as from the standpoint of receiving information and providing service, I think they're outstanding, so.
Yes, they provide additional service to us, or part of the things, too, if you're aware of it. Remember the GIS project for the addressing information to enable you to find out.
I just think it's.
Excellent consulting firm, it's a public safety consulting firm.
Yeah, very high credibility with us, but also, it's kind of interesting that they allow for reimbursement from the 901 to help maximize our use of that money. So it's a win-win. So it's really, really-
And the way he invoices us is causing it up to 901 funding counter proceedings. We don't have to pay a lot of money either.
He's probably returned more than that $60,000.
Absolutely. I believe that, I believe that will order it.
It's been moved in second. Any comment, John?
Well, I don't know. Would it be inappropriate for me to ask about hiring Gary Verna?
Yes. Now, can we, can we-
Go ahead, Abby. Abby.
There we go. There are nothing else on this contract? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. John, now.
Yeah, just any background information that you can provide about hiring Gary, or youth, which is approved then.
His credibility and the services that he provides in that area now, his background as such is visible, and he chose him. And so he's had my team in the future to get it back on his feet.
I don't know Gary. Can you tell me a little bit about him?
He currently works for, of course, they have safety control. That's one of their lieutenants. He's becoming an officer over there now. And has been an employee there for about a number of years. He's an incredible employee there.
Will you be at the meeting for the L.A.P.C. meeting?
I don't know if you're okay. I get what you're saying. I was going to make an announcement about the L.A.P.C. meeting.
John, you can talk about getting the hazmat team back on its feet. It can be sort of difficult. So, what are you specifically talking about?
Hazmat team was new for inspection, an extension. The six were already in order, as mentioned. Things in order, how to be inspected, certified, some of the specific features on them. To continue to develop, to enhance the services.
Where are you now as far as being resurfaced?
We're still working with PMA and the people to recertification. We have an extension, so we have July to-
Optimistic?
I believe we will be, we'll take it. It appears to be rolling along fairly quickly now. Which is, it's a few things that need to be completed yet, but we may approach it in the process again. So, thank you.
That's kind of a specialized job. How much interest did you receive in that position, whether you love campaigns?
There were a few. There wasn't a lot of, of interest.
Thank you. John?
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Next, we have some folks led by Jay Wanger. Talk about some refinancing opportunities.
Morning.
Good morning. Jay, would you introduce your chair.
So Peter Adeloff-Stevenson Lee has been in his county's public council. And Brian Bradley, Department of Tampa Gardens, will be the underwriter for this refinancing as they were for refinancing the land as well. And what we're presenting to you today is a parameters ordinance that would authorize the refunding of the 2011 bonds that are currently outstanding. Interest rates, as you probably have read or seen in the news, have dropped to historic lows, so it's an outstanding time to refinance debt. We're estimating savings somewhere in the $300,000 range, most of which will occur in your fiscal year 2017. We are, this doesn't obligate the county to anything. We certainly will monitor the market. We have to get a rating. We have to acquire bond insurance. All that's going to take a few weeks. And then when we come back, assuming the market holds, we'll give you an update and access the market, but we don't see anything changing dramatically in the coming weeks. Again, it doesn't obligate the county, it's just an authorization so that we can move forward. It gives us and the underwriters some flexibility as to when we actually access the market as those great dates are that we have to be in the market. We can have good news, bad news on that day that might not be advantageous to the county. So we're seeking your approval of this ordinance that would allow us to start the process. Doesn't obligate the county.
Any questions or three, on motion or other questions?
Make a motion to provide your-
Second.
Forward. Make a motion to second. John?
My question was, what was the size of that original bond? 3.6.
Yeah, 3.6 original. You pay down close to $700,000, I believe, date. So there's, it's just about 3.8. 2.16, yes. So you pay down about $50,000.
Not all in favor of the motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. The other project? You have two agreements.
Yeah, we have two agreements. One, so under our, our war of regulation, we're required to have an agreement for everything we do with you. And we'd entertain an open-ended agreement, and we thought because we have two specific projects, we would give you two specific agreements. So one is in connection with the refinancing of the 2011 bonds. The other one is in connection with the expiration of the pension funding option. Certainly both are conditioned upon closing of a transaction, so if there's not a successful transaction. We did receive bank loan proposals and a couple of underwriting indications of where the market is for the pension financing. We would like to schedule a meeting at your earliest convenience to review that and go through the analysis again so that you can make a decision. Again, rates are at an all-time low, so your borrowing cost over 20 years is just north of 4%, so we're looking for a 4%. So a very attractive borrowing environment even for taxable obligations. But it's a decision you're going to have to make as to how you want to finance the unfunded pension liability. But we would like to schedule a meeting for that. We do have two agreements in front of you that we would like to be considered today.
Let me just specify, the we, the Sosco Hen Group Advisors.
Yes, yes.
So anytime, as you mentioned, under the S.E.C. regulations, anytime Sosco Hen Group would be doing work on your behalf, even if it's exploring financing, an agreement must be in place. Doesn't mean there's a fee to be paid.
That's correct.
It establishes a fee, but it'll need to be paid. It's different.
And while you haven't made a decision, we just thought by the letter of the law, it's probably appropriate for setting agreements that if there are any questions, we'll be doing that.
And I had emailed both of those to you, and they're separate, take separate action.
Sorry, I'll make a motion to move ahead with the on refinancing agreement for the 3.6 million.
This would be the agreement, the Sosco Hen Advisors?
Yes.
Oh, okay, right.
I'll second.
So moved in second. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And then the other part is the exploratory part. Just to be clear, this is not new debt. This is existing debt that we're looking to refinance to save money.
Yeah, it's a long-term obligation. It's not considered by definition debt, but it is a long-term obligation and is a security debt, yes.
So we need a motion to accept the conditions under which you intend the exploration and the motion.
All right, I'll make that motion. And we're going to second that. I just want to comment.
I'll second it and I'll submit.
Well, I just wanted to be clear that I made the motion and I'm going to vote to approve the motion, but I want to make it very clear because I felt there was a misrepresentation of this discussion at the last time, that this in no way obligates us to move forward with that pension obligation bond. It's merely gathering information, which as a county commissioner, I don't want to make any decision here without having all the information in front of me. So that's why I'm moving forward with this.
And that's absolutely correct. You're under no obligation to proceed with any of it. We're simply representing the options and considerations.
Yes, and I want to make it perfectly clear that as per consistency, I plan on voting no, because I feel that this takes a soft obligation, that we could choose to pay an lump sum at the end of the year and makes it a hard, hard payment that we have to make every month. And there's months when we're short because our real estate taxes aren't coming in. I think it's the wrong way to go. And some of the research that I did on this method of financing a bond calls it a Ponzi scheme. And on top of that, this will take our $20 million debt, that's a hard payment, and make it 48 million, because this is actually more than we owe on regular debt obligations. And so I'm totally against this line of financing. And I just want to be upfront about it.
Like, does the Ponzi scheme, according to that, how's that work?
I can provide the articles for you.
But you don't have a-
I do have it. Do you want to have it?
No explanation. I don't want to read it, but this-
I choose not to explain the whole thing right now. I'll let you read it for yourself. I don't want to misquote anyone.
Any comment or reaction?
Probably, that's probably the conversation we should have when we schedule a meeting to discuss the options. I think all we're looking for right now is to offer authority to continue working.
Fair enough. Anything else? Not all in favor of the motion to continue the exploration by way of this agreement? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm sorry, you came out wrong.
Let's do this again. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It's the vote. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be in touch. We have to schedule a reading call, but we'll get all of that set up. We would expect to be in market in the coming weeks, so, and we don't see anything changing dramatically. It should be an opportunity.
Peter, you have items for signature. If you'll leave it with me.
Yeah, that'd be great. You keep lying? You're questioning all of them? Yeah, thanks, Dan. Okay. Except for the pharmacy contractor that's just opened right to the-
Oh, okay. First page.
Yep. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Opposed? Kevin, if you'd like to lead the discussion or the introductions?
Sure. With me today on my, I'm Kevin Schramm, the administrator of Leighton County MHI DEI program. And to my left is Jim Gunmore, who's the executive director of the Leighton County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse. And to my right is Jim Voltry, who is the director of Leighton County Children and Youth Services. The agenda I didn't record at such a moment is the Human Services Plan that we do as a senior secretary of U. This is for fiscal years 16, 17. There's a very clear and distinct format that we must follow to develop this plan. So a number of individuals from various county departments work together. You can see all the news, there are thousands of us that work with this plan year. The format since prior years has not changed significantly, pretty much the same. Each department has a piece that they must answer questions to or give reports about their plans, how they work together. The bulk of the plan by far is the mental health component, to identify target populations and identify strengths and challenges in serving those populations. We did have a public hearing last week for the draft of the plan at that point. We were pleased to see they allowed six members of the public to hear that discussion, and they offered some input. So we included their input into our plans. So at this point, the plan is complete. I would, Jim, if you wanted to discuss the DNA component or-
I don't really have a-
With children and youth, they say, simply refer to the youth they speak by, and he has one line. But Jim worked with us-
I mean, you did a good job with that.
Yeah, two seconds. And Jim did put together the opening summary where it discusses how we work together and what they provide services.
Yes, I can give an update on my section of the plan, the drug alcohol part of the plan. What they asked us to list is the services that we provide to the public. And I listed those for our office in this plan, which is an extensive continuum of care, such as gambling counseling, outpatient counseling, intensive outpatient counseling, medicated assisted treatment, partial hospitalization, detoxification, inpatient rehabilitation. We also provide case management services. And we specialize services for IV drug users, pregnant women and women with children. In the plan, I really focused on the heroin epidemic, not only does our community see going on, as well as statewide. I talked about in the plan, our office had 571 unique people last year, and out of those 571 people, 261 were there for primary substance of heroin. So it accounts for 46% of all the people that we see in our office. So we have focused our efforts to address that epidemic. One of the things that we have done, and I put it in the plan, is we developed a heroin task force. It's a joint task force between the county and the city of Leighton. What we've done with that, along with the implementation of Naroxone, often called Marcan, we introduced that, and we had that in our community. I mean, the police, some policemen, police departments are using it as well as we have it at our office. The prison just recently got it. We're also going to distribute to the probation. So I think those two things have really helped our cause in fighting this epidemic. We're a long way from home as far as solving the whole thing. Other things that I pointed out in the plan were, you know, all the efforts that we put in plays. There's one issue that really hinders us at times is capacity of the system, whether it be detox beds, whether it be treatment beds. We're always searching for those resources. So we can have the best plan, we have the best policies and procedures, however, when we go do some things with individuals, sometimes we're blocked just because of the resources, bed space, and so on. That's pretty much, in the plan, I also address, they ask you to address how your, you know, there's target populations, how you deal with your older adults, how you deal with your transition age people from 18 to 26, how we deal with adolescents, how we deal with people with co-occurring situations, and how we deal with criminal justice involving individuals. So that's all part of the plan, and we describe for them what we're doing in Leighton County. So I have my part of the report here, if anybody wants to just review the drug alcohol part of it, as well as the entire plan.
Thank you.
I have a question. You've mentioned gambling, and it appears that our state government, in their wisdom, is going to approve internet gambling, which for me is a genuine concern, because I think it makes those that are most vulnerable to gambling abuse are going to, it's going to be much more accessible to them, credit card charges and so on. Have you taken a look at that, or is that something that we'll be looking at in the future?
It's something that I absolutely feel will affect people in Leighton County. Access, the more accessible things are, the fewer will find them. Making that, making that call will increase possibly what we do with gambling. The interesting thing is our gambling budget's set, pretty much what it was set at last year, at $60,000. That hasn't gone up. So we would be looking at things like that. The increased worth sets go to gambling, we would look at increasing our gambling fund for the state.
Yeah, I was going to say, it might be an opportunity to contact our legislators, and they do in fact pass this, they should- They should approve funding then to combat it as a, you know, public hazard.
We get gambling funds on a two-year cycle. This is our second year of that cycle. So next year, we will be reapplying for gambling funds. And we always ask for more every year. But with that in mind, I'm sure that we'll ask for considerable amount more. Whether or not we get it is the question, or we'll just ask for it.
Thank you, Jim. Do you see the motion to approve the plan?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the Human Services Plan. Any questions or comments? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. And do you want to introduce your staff, folks, the key players that helped put it together as well?
We have some of them there. Dawn Wolf is in charge of the electrovis fields and early intervention. They're the only ones, we're the only ones present that were part of this. Very well, I can't even name them.
I just didn't want to have to hear them to acknowledge you.
Yes. Thank you.
Great. Very good. Thank you.
I have a third quarter invoices presented for approval. I did cast up for bring up a signature page. A third quarter invoice is the amount of one million three hundred fifteen thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars, half of the cents for your approval.
Do you have ten motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thanks.
Thank you.
That's awesome. If you would, if you're ready for me, I'll move on to the next item. We do have two Health Choices contracts that are up for the annual renewal. One of them is an agreement between Leaven County and the four counties work together as a group. Again, that would be in the Gulf of the Americas, or Commonwealth and Leaven County Fifth. We certainly propose to continue our relationship of the Capital Area Behavior Health Collaborative. And this contract allows to do that is for the term beginning July one, which is already started. And ends on June thirty, twenty eighteen. So it is a two-year commitment.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we force this agreement between the counties. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? So moved.
I have two signature sheets for that. Additionally, we have another Health Choices contract. Having approved the one among the five counties, this would now allow that five counties, through the Capital Area Behavior Health Collaborative, to contract with Perform Care, who is actually the company that delivers the services on behalf of those five counties. Again, we do this, we've been in a relationship with them for a number of years. This agreement would run from July one, twenty sixteen, to June third, twenty eighteen as well.
Do you see the motion? So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we adopt this plan. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So moved.
And, thank you. The other item in terms of a contract that I have is it's a contract amendment for the year that just ended fifteen sixteen. It is with Quest. Again, sometimes we end up needing additional dollars to cover services that haven't been elicited. The total change for Quest in this situation would be sixteen thousand six hundred one dollars. The money was within our fifteen sixteen budget to cover the cost for the conscious of those services for Quest.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this contract amendment for Quest. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So moved.
That one does not require a signature. And then, actually, I have one more contract. This is for our agreement with the state and the Infant Stoppers and Families Medicaid waiver. Again, we've been doing that with the state for decades. It is effective July first, twenty sixteen, but there's no end date on it. It continues until such time as the waiver would end, whatever end, or if someone would fail to renew. So I may ask you for your approval to maintain that contract with the Commonwealth for that program. It is the contract by which we run the early intervention program.
Make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. So moved.
Thank you. There are two signature pages for that one.
Two signatures, but no moral support. What happened to that?
He's got my back. We do have one more agenda item if you're ready for me. We wish to discuss a proposed change to our organizational structure and organization chart. Specifically, we are at this time proposing to, we are proposing a complete and permanent closure of our Support Coordination Unit within our Electrodisabilities Program. What most people commonly know as case management is what these folks do. It is a nine-person unit. Currently, three of the vacancies, or three of the positions are vacant. Historically, we've had great difficulty in keeping those positions filled. The turnover is extensive, and we believe that the citizens of Leaven County would be better served if we would close that unit and if other providers would decide to open their own programs. We would not contract with them. The funding for this comes through reimbursements from the state based on the number of units provided. Happens this way in the number of counties, I might emphasize. There'll be five different case management units in our office. Four of them are very stable. We've never considered any such move with those four units. Some of the people have been there over twenty years in those units. We do not have that level of turnover that we've had. Certainly, the Electrodisabilities Support Coordinator is having each challenge trying to meet the demands of those physicians. We noted that over the years, we've had a number of people who started with our agency in those positions and have transferred out into drug and alcohol, into mental health, into other departments. But we don't have a recollection of any employee migrating into that unit. And then we look historically, just did a review of the employees over a period of years, and the turnover is just staggering. Some folks, many folks, in their years, they're moved on to a department or within the agency for something else. I always say the most important thing is, is how do we best serve the community? And I believe getting out of that business and closing that unit would allow private providers to open their own programs. And they even said they would hire the staff veteran, our current physicians, to commissioners approve this. So there is a spot for the folks doing this work. If you approve this, we would be required to give the state a Medicaid notice of the closure, which would also allow the current staff to consider their options and look for alternatives to their current employment. We have two providers who have, who have expressed a strong interest in providing services in Leaven County. And this would not be eternal or of the program, that would not transfer records or files. They would simply open this and we enter a new provider in our county.
And in a contract directly with the state?
Yeah, that's correct. Yes. So the two providers that are interested are Service Access Management Inc., veteran known as Sammy out of Brady. And the other one is CMU, Service Management, out of Dalton County out of Harrisburg. Both of those programs are very interested in meeting the needs of the individuals in Leaven County.
And is it possible that this is approved and becomes more widely known, that there may be others?
That's true. It's an open market.
Right.
In fact, any of those two providers or any other provider that's coming here today and opened their own program, even if we decided not to close our unit, it's a free market.
Do you have ten motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second, I have a question. I was just curious, is the caseload for these managers greater than the other five departments?
Number of people served? Number of people on the face look? No. Dawn, what is the caseload size?
About sixty.
So they do high caseload.
Right.
But they want to see everybody?
No. And I think, you know, between the different departments, there's varying caseload sizes depending on how intense the service is that's being delivered. So.
I also did want to mention that Sarah Fuller from our advisory board is here. We met in a special session to discuss this with them. I would, Sarah, if you wanted to add anything or any questions?
We had a number of questions that were presented to both SAM Inc. and CMU last week, and we got answers to those questions about caseload and who would be the family's first line of contact if there was a problem with case management. We asked questions about what they would require to hire our employees. We asked questions regarding how they support their employees. And the answers we got were pretty good. I mean, they were clearly sensitive to what our concerns were, and they came forth with the answers in less than twenty-four hours, because I gave the questions to Kevin on Tuesday, and we had answers Wednesday afternoon. So I was impressed with that. I have to say that personally, I was taken aback when this information was given to me, because as a family member, I looked to the supports coordinator for my first line of contact with any services that I give or that are provided to my family member. And I was concerned about whether or not it would be as good as what I felt Leaven County services were. But I think it will be. You know, they are endeavoring to make sure that the transition is a smooth one. They are offering employment to our service coordinators should they want it. And that would be the transition link for them, for those families. I still have concerns, because change is different, but change can be good. And if we can lower the caseloads, create a more flexible environment for the families and for the supports coordinators, I think the family's needs will be better met by having that more flexible environment. So the board is in favor of moving forward with this. You know, we want good services for our families, and we think that this might be a step in the right direction. Not that we haven't had good services, but our hands have really been tied with the fact that we just can't keep employees. And, you know, some families have two or three different supports coordinators in a year, and that's hard. So the board in general is very supportive of the change.
Thank you. Thank you for your volunteers and support. Bill, you?
Yes, Kevin, I know you had indicated, you know, difficulty keeping folks in this unit. What is the longest-term employee that you have?
In that unit? The supervisor in that unit has been there forty-eight years. And the other supervisor, supervisory position is vacant. After that, there is a sports coordinator in there that is there three years, I believe.
Three and a half years.
Three and a half years. And then everyone else is around one on seven months. Some of them are in a year or less than a year.
Thank you. Anything else, Jim?
Yeah. Can you give me a sense of how many families we're talking about being infected and how you will communicate this transition to them?
Yes. We have, because cases open and close, we have somewhere between five hundred and five hundred and twenty-five cases in our office.
Actually, last count was five forty, but as Kevin said, it changes.
Yeah, it's changed. Our plan is, if the commissioners would approve this, we will send out a letter and give every family or consumer. The letter will explain what is happening and what their options are to continue to receive services. We would include a choice form, asking them to, it's one form, we ask them to complete that to notify us of their choice of a new provider. And we will also include, certainly include the contact information for the two providers who identified themselves as being threatened to be unable. And we'll also give them a statewide list of all the providers and how in love that if they would want to encourage one or another, you know, another one of them to open up, they could do so. Additionally, we're planning to hold two meetings for consumers and family members to answer, to explain the needs or the questions they...
You're going to, you will be retaining the, this component. I mean, it'll still be mental health, early intervention, and so on. So you will have a certain number of supervisors still in place.
Their management staff would remain, yes. You know, Dawn and her staff would remain. Several years ago, the Altus Developmental Programs took a different perspective of the county's structure, and they essentially divided the management piece from the case management piece. They no longer call us the county, they call us an administrative entity. Dawn is responsible for managing that administrative entity and all the oversight and waiver management that goes along with that. Then the SCO is just Sports Coordination Unit, which has these case managers. So there was sort of a de facto subdivision of those duties and responsibilities. But yes, to your question, we would retain the management functions that we have.
Thank you. We have a motion seconded on the floor, and we're moving to accept your proposal for the integration for case management. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. So moved.
Thank you very much for your support. We will proceed in a way that best serves the community and the community itself.
Thank you, Karen.
So, thank you for your comments. Okay.
Thank you.
Send them over back to the board. We'll get them ready for Jim.
There you go.
Corey, you're working.
Where is it?
There you go. Roman, warm it up the car.
Thank you very much.
See you. Roman, Roman, good morning.
Yes, good morning.
All right. Please introduce yourself and...
Okay, you may proceed. My name is Roman Shahay. I'm the director of the Renova Center, and I'm here this morning to seek your approval to renew the contract of Aztec Inc. to provide fiscal services to the Renova Center for fiscal year 2016, '17. These services include preparation and submission of cost reports, waiver requests, and budget to the Commonwealth in order to comply with state fiscal requirements governing intermediate care facilities for people with intellectual disabilities. In addition, Aztec repairs and submits fiscal reports the county requires for their file. Please inform you that the fees associated with the administrative, associate, and executive hours remain the same as the prior fiscal year.
Just an emotion.
Is there a dollar figure with that contract?
What I, I don't have an estimate, but I can say, as you're aware of, for fiscal year 2015, '16, the cost for Aztec services was fifty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty. And as we look forward to the second year with Aztec, since that was the startup year, I do anticipate a reduction in the overall cost as I see a lot...
There's a lot of extra work involved.
Yeah, and the executive hours being the search she needed to get, you know, involved and familiar. So I do see her taking a more oversight role as far as being a hands-on direct role. So I do anticipate the impact coming down.
And the unit costs has not changed?
Right. Unit costs are the same.
And the cost per hour is the same, it's just the number of units. I think Roman's anticipating not as many units.
Right.
Second motion.
Second.
It's moving to the second that we entered this contract for financial services for the Renova Center. Any questions or comments? All clear, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign, so move.
Thank you so much for your support. Good night.
Welcome, young man. Thank you. Good morning, folks.
Morning, Dan.
Good morning. Please introduce yourself, and we may continue.
Daniel Seaman, chief county assessor for Lubbock County. I have two disabled veterans to bring forward this one. One is John J. Coast, and that's at 112 Oak and Way in Mottstown. And John R. Gogets, and that's at 2684, Irving, Maristown.
I'm making motions to grant those exemptions.
Second?
It's moving to the second. Pass this motion for real estate exemptions. All clear, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, so move. Okay, and then the one other thing I have, I have an outstanding appeal back on June 16. So thank you.
Recess and go into the appeals board.
Okay, let's do that.
It is the property at north of East Main Street, and it's the lead home line, Susan Home Line property, currently assessed at six hundred and seventy-five thousand. And it's our recommendation that there would be a new unit. We did submit some information.
And your wishes, gentlemen?
Second motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Was our motion to adjourn the assessment? All in favor? Aye.
We'll reconvene our regular meeting and pass the folks who've been well to advance.
Sam's been coming here for seventeen years.
He had jet black hair and about fifty pounds thinner. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for bringing us back here. With me is Sergio this morning. Actually, the first project, Sergio, and I have worked together. Sergio represents the measurement and verification portion of our performance in contracting this. He's fantastic. I think he'd really like what he puts in there for you. If I may, before I quit, Jamie's right, I've had the privilege of working with the county here for years. I've been on Honeywell for thirty-four years, and we certainly thank you for your business, your friendship, we've developed friendships down here over the years and such. It's been a great relationship. We've done what's known as performance contracting here for a few years for the New York officials. But it is, it's a legal method of procurement in the state where you, an ester energy saving company, tell you, we install and upgrade your building infrastructure with more efficient equipment. And the installation as such, and the savings generated by that equipment pays for the program itself, and it works spectacular down here for the county, for your facilities, and the tax for yourself. And that's what Sergio rolls in what you have now in front of you, what's known as the M&amp;V report. The M&amp;V report is also required by statute to demonstrate to you the savings that are produced by, by the agreement itself. And again, your numbers are spectacular on your system of course, so low for us. And you've had the benefit of getting upgraded infrastructure needs, which we call, which we were here for sorely needed at that time. And this is probably the only way it was going to happen about capital inclusion.
Well, boilers to roofs. And everything in between, water savings.
Yes, exactly right. And it's all illustrated in there. I remember, I recall in this building, the one thing we didn't do, Jamie, and we had a discussion, I remember, with the windows. The windows went overboard at that time, they weren't, didn't necessarily...
I'm waiting for that one, that's...
Well, the neat thing is, this is considered a living document in that you can amend, and if Cedar Haven left the program, it can be amended to reflect that and such. And we can certainly come back and look at it again. The main thing now, lighting, lighting is just amazing. The M&amp;V lighting has come down in cost there before where it was only, might have worked only specific instances. It's now almost told us that you can use it across the board, and the light levels are better, clarity is better, it's a whiter light, so something you don't consider that important. But the main portion, the reason I'm here is, again, just to thank you, thank you for your business. It's worked out very, very well. It's been a great relationship. We certainly value the fact that you put your trust in us, and we know that we deserve to feel what we have done. So to that end, and I'm also a talker, so I could go all day if you'd like, but I don't think you want to do that.
We both are.
With that, I think I'd like to turn it over to Sergio, and you can give it to your portion of the M&amp;V, any handouts you have in front of you. Any information that you may require or need should be in here. If it's not, it'd be more than happy to get it here, I think. Okay?
As Pat mentioned, my name is Sergio Diaz Maresco. We work with Honeywell, and I'm on the measurement and verification team, and I'm an individual that will support this contract for the next fifteen years, and I believe it's actually, I'm sorry, it's twenty years, the duration of the project. And I make site visits each year, and I generate savings reports like the one that you're looking at. That being said, I'd like to ask, did everyone get a copy of the report? Do you look like you don't have one? Jamie's got it spare right there. The one in front of you, Jamie, is yours. And then, so, this guy doesn't ask. What's your name?
This is a copy of the presentation.
Okay. So I'm not going to do a PowerPoint, but I do have a presentation, so I'll go through kind of a hybrid. We'll jump between the report and we'll jump back to the actual presentation, okay? So first of all, kind of the organization of the report, there's overview and a summary of who the team is, how it's organized, and that information. It tells you what periods are for reporting, it tells you when things started, and all of that information, and it tells you your cumulative savings to date. That's on that first page, program overview 1.1. And then next, it tells you all the work that we did. Now, of course, Cedar Haven has been removed from the scope, so all of those X's that are there, they're removed. And that's in the presentation, you might even know that. But I think Pat did a fairly good job of kind of describing what measurement and verification is and sort of the, yeah, the performance contracting and kind of how it works. But basically, if, with upfront payment, you fund energy retrofits across the building, like you were saying, water and lighting and camp equipment. And over the course of time, that those energy savings each year pay for the project itself. So that's that first slide here that says viable solution, kind of gives you an idea of what, of how the system functions. So what is M&amp;V? Measurement and verification is basically a form of commissioning on your project that is, as Pat said, required by the state to check the status of the reporting and make sure that everything is going correctly with the project in itself. And it's both a quantitative and qualitative analysis and verification procedure. We use what's called International Performance Measurement and Verification Protocol, it's called IPMVP. It's an international organization similar to ASHRAE, so an engineering type organization, and they issue a protocol that if you want to, you can look at. It's done by the Efficiency Evaluation Organization. So that's kind of it, and there's, it comes in four flavors. Option A, B, C, and D with all, you know, different steps as to what that does for your project. Option A was selected for everything, which is retrofit isolation. We measure it directly at the retrofit. So that skips past the next two slides, Gloria. As I mentioned, so this is slide number eight in the scope of work, looking at your retrofit highlights page. This goes over what was done in the project, so you can revisit that at any time if you're interested. What I kind of went over really quickly as to what M&amp;V is, is listed in the methodology section in that first part of the report, 1.3, and then 1.4, and then, of course, what was selected on 1.5. Feel free to stop in anytime, guys, if you think I'm going too fast. Just want to get through the kind of basics first. Each year, the report and savings is adjusted for the current rates, so as to accurately represent the cost avoidance to you guys. And that schedules on page 1.6. And then we get to the performance, okay, finally, in section 2.0. And so there's a differentiation here. There's a total cost avoidance, which includes the operational savings, which are not, they're not measured, they're stipulated based off of information that we've collected during the technical energy audit and that we understand as known variables contributing to your expenses. And then there's the energy savings portion. The energy savings portion is directly evident of the upgrades that we performed for you guys. And those are the bits of the work that we're actually getting. So as you can see, total performance right now with the, with the operational savings including is 117%. Now, on the next page, you're going to see that the energy performance is better. And that's because of the removal of the Cedar Haven. We had to adjust the savings slightly. You know, we had to remove the information from the engineering calculations that was associated with that facility. So the percentages are going to differ here, and they will going forward as well, just so you're aware of that. But we're at 121% of plan, basically, and that gives you a net savings as an excess amount in your budget of $20,000, $21,000 each year. And this table every year in the report will show you the savings year over year and the performance of the project.
If I can interject for a second?
Sure.
And just for clarity, everything above the percent of plan, the idea is that 100%, you're covering the cost of the program. That's your guarantee. Guarantee is to make it a no risk opportunity for the county, which it did. For clarity, anything above stays with you 100%, that's all yours. That is found money for your...
Yeah, I have a question. I'm seeing energy savings, 46 million before, 26 million after, et cetera. And so my question to you is, I don't think I'm seeing the number, how much money did we put into improvements at Cedar Haven, the actual fixtures or whatever it was, that was removed, that we are not saving energy on? Because that would theoretically come from the profit from the sale of Cedar Haven, and I have no comprehension of what that figure is.
So the question is, for clarity, is what was the Cedar Haven, was the Cedar Haven portion, you say, 1.3?
1.3 million. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Sergio?
Well, yeah, what we were able to do, that information is provided in the game of scope. It becomes a complexity because of the way the calculations are put together. Like, for example, the building management system, that's a function of all of the buildings together, and it's organized by each of the solutions that we provide. For example, light setback, like if the temperatures are changed in the middle of the night, that applies to each building. So the way that the calculation works, it's not always evident that we can separate out each individual building. Yeah, but the large portion of the scope at Cedar Haven were individual ECMs. The EMS was a small component. So that figure that Jamie provided you with is fairly accurate.
EMS is building management.
Building management system, yes. Sorry.
Now, the numbers you cited, though, those are energy savings numbers, the 4.6 million and the 2.6.
Yes, that's why I said I had no idea what the actual cost of the installation was. Yeah.
So since we're on that topic, I'll divert your attention to the back of the report, the appendix. There was a change order that we didn't end up getting signed yet to... Okay, it's on, it's right after the measurement and verification site visit report, where it says page 1 of 15. It's a title change order report, okay? I don't know where you guys are there. And Jamie, you have a copy of it in the back of your report. You there? Okay. So what this does is, in the base contract, which I have an extra copy of for you guys, Jamie, you have that to know. It's called Attachment D, which is our support services agreement. And what this does is it modifies that agreement. It makes an amendment to it that changes the cost of the measurement and verification services because now we don't have to verify anything at that building because of the sale. So that's, there's a decrease in the price for my work and the services that I'm providing to you. And then also, on the next page, there is a modification to the annual savings. And what we did is, in the previous year, which is year three, we included all of the savings that you guys acquired up until the sale of the Cedar Haven Nursing Home, which is in December. So there's 10 months of savings included in that guarantee for year three. Year four, with the double asterisk, that's the first year that there's no savings at all for the Cedar Haven Nursing Home. So that's this year's report. And so that's what that does, it modifies the original contract and the savings that were represented there to what they would actually be under the contractual conditions and with the engineering calculation. Does that make sense? Okay. And then on the next page, it shows what was removed. So again, it's lighting, you know, the boiler plant upgrades, the kitchen renovation, and then water and some other items. Any questions on that, guys? Ladies and gentlemen?
I'm going to, once he's done with this report, I'm going to seek a motion on that change.
All right. So moving forward, you'll see a pie chart. This is in section 2.0, where it says energy cost unit avoidance, page 2.3. And this breaks down the electrical, natural gas, and water savings for each of the conservation measures. And it also gives you the dollar fixture, dollar amounts. So if you look at it, the largest portion of your savings is coming from the lighting retrofit. So as Pat was saying, taking that to the next level will skyrocket the savings and really, really drive it upwards. And then the next, the next portion behind that is the water conservation, very closely at 42, actually, I'm sorry, I had to be opposite way. The water, the water's number one, and the lighting's right behind it.
Not what I remembered.
I'm sorry.
Again, excuse me, I seem to recall, and you might, Commissioner, when we first did this, right after it was all implemented and done and rolling, the utility showed up to check your meters.
Yeah.
And that's automatically, and so reductions were in the initial installation.
It's also provided some operational tools, which have nothing to do with conservation or, you know, or anything else, but it gives, it has given... or, you know, or anything else, but it gives, it has given the staff there the ability to control water for showers and so on, when before, if they wouldn't be, you know, if someone would stay in the shower and wouldn't leave the shower area or continue to take a shower, they would have to, you know, put manpower to do that. Now, they simply, you know, hit a button, the cell phone closes and the water goes off, which has been a real operational plus.
It's also behavior as well. We have three other jail projects, and we've implemented that exact retrofit with the auto shut off, and they've noticed an increase in the behavior of the inmates there, so I mean, that's a little...
Flooding used to be a pastime of the inmates, flooding toilets, and so now that's controlled by...
There's all kinds of things, yeah. And they can, they can change, change the degree of variability as well, like, there's a particular inmate that has, has to go to the bathroom more frequently, they can adjust it for that, that's all. So, but that breakdown's there for you, and then there's the operational savings on the next page, 2.4, and remember, this is, this is based off of information that was collected during the initial audit. There's no, there's no M&amp;V on the operational savings. And then we break it down by location for you in, in section 3.0. Each building is broken down for the savings in terms of your achievement, and the highest achievement is at the County Correctional Facility, and that's largely due to the upgrade of your mechanical equipment, almost every air handle is replaced at the roof, so that makes, makes a big, big difference. And then, of course, the municipal building is closely behind that, this facility right here, just due to size. And then there's a, there's a chart for you, so you can see that. And that's kind of, that's kind of how it goes, and then there's a little bit of further breakdown by each energy conservation measure, a little bit of granularity by the, by the facilities, and it shows you each of the rates that was used and that sort of thing, but it's more or less, and it has some details as to how the calculation is done, but it's sort of nitty-gritty details, so if you want to, you can get into them, but I think for the subject of this meeting, we're pretty good.
I have a question. What was the percentage of reduction of use of water?
That's a good question. You know, I'd have to look at the baseline information. I don't have that data on you right now.
I just during my time to drought, when we declare an emergency, we ask for voluntary reduction of five percent, and I just wondered if that exceeded this?
I, I want to say that the typical reduction, particularly, especially with the jails, is around ten percent of the facilities, but I, I can get, I can check the baseline for it, and I can get back to you on that. If you have my card, please send me an email, and I'll go get that to you for sure.
And so, I guess the next, the logical next question would be is, if it is a two or ten percent, that's significant and would save companies money if they are interested in a similar audit. Do you guys do businesses too, or just governments?
I don't know. I have businesses, okay. People, the school market is very, very strong.
Schools?
Yes. I mean, you asked a question very similar to that. Years ago, Commissioner, about the Chesapeake...
And it was known at that time, wasn't it? Yeah, so you've not come around.
Right.
Okay.
I've seen a wide variety of projects today. This is Miami County facility, I've done a metering project as well over in Delaware, I work a lot in Virginia, that's mostly schools down there, the three prison projects that I mentioned are down there as well, so our scope is very large, there's a lot of different solutions, and part of the M&amp;V, and particularly myself in general, I like to really develop a strong relationship with my customers and convene, converse with you guys and figure out what your needs are, and I'll work with Pat and develop a sales approach and that sort of thing in terms of building it out and what it'll end up looking for you. But the long-term relationship as far as the reporting, ultimately, you guys determine what sort of feedback you want. That's, that's, in the development of new contracts, we facilitate a workshop, and what we'll do is, we'll sit down with you guys, and once we have a scope that we know is fairly solid, and we propose to you, we'll discuss how you want, what kind of feedback you want on that. Do you want, like, if you're, for some reason, you're particularly interested in the lighting, even though we know as engineers it's not going to change, but if you wanted it measured every single year, we could do that for you. So, things like that. And then it gets a little bit more complicated, but when you go into building management systems, there's trending, ongoing analysis that can be done and provided back to you to have more real-time feedback, so.
To your point, Commissioner, in the beginning, I almost suppose these were universally accepted for, for the fund, just to save the dollar savings. Now, we're seeing the content of water, the contribution of green benefits, the schools, the ecology closes, so it's evolved, it's really evolved, and it's not very specialized, and it's all good, every portion of it.
Anything else? Make a motion to...
John Latimer with... I guess I just put it out there, do you see any, or recommend any large changes here that could bring substantial savings, solar panels, things of that nature, or do you think that you kind of have it covered?
I'll take that first, and then, Sergio, from your perspective, we looked at that when we did this initial phase after the very first phase, and at that time, a lot of the solar installations and such are predicated and almost driven by rebates, because at that time, again, like with the light, they were costly, so they wouldn't work unless you had a rebate in. I don't think there's any harm in if we brought one of these years back and went through the buildings again, just to save for something, for instance, the light, the lighting and the controls are big, because they've evolved exponentially in the last five years, so there's always chance for the issue. They look like windows, you know, they work when they're paired with something else. So there's always more that can be done, just because of the evolution of the market, you know, and it's a fair question, and it's a good question, but a lot of it is tied, again, to rebates, what's coming out of Parisburg, what's coming out of Philly, and so, to make solar, and so, etc. Solar is huge in New Jersey, for instance, Pennsylvania might be a tough sell, because some of the rebates aren't there yet, but it depends, it depends on the application, they're all site-specific, and it depends on what works.
My background is environmental science, so speaking to the, you know, alternative energy solutions, it becomes a very complicated analysis procedure to really make sure that it's going to be effective, and as Pat was mentioning with the rebates, there's, there's an additional entity that gets involved with, with the fact that you become a, you know, a utility, a private utility, and the laws are different in New Jersey, and a lot of times, there could be something that's called a power purchase agreement, that sort of thing, so it's something we can look into, but it's a very intensive study, but a lot of the savings come from operational, more so than mechanical.
So you're saying we, we would have to become a public utility, we could not sell the SRACs and sell our, our energy generated to the utility?
I don't know the specifics of, I know that that's a general thing across the United States, I don't know the specifics of Pennsylvania and this county in particular, but I do know that the SRACs, if that's what you've heard of, that's probably the case, that's another possibility.
That's how we do ours, because we have solar.
Then that's, that's probably true, yeah. I, we, again, we have to look into it.
I didn't know if it was different between individuals and businesses, that's...
I don't believe so, you know.
The ultimate question is for the...
Absolutely, yes, there's always potential. And if you're interested, in the, in the back is my site visit report that I conducted this year, and it details some of the suggestions as far as different improvements, and it also comments on the performance. Kind of gives you an overview of the, how the M&amp;V comes into play with the contract requirements and that sort of thing.
Ready for a motion to...
Yes, if you would, on the change order to remove the, remove Cedar Haven from the M&amp;V, from the verification, reduce the cost of the M&amp;V, and also from the, I guess, is that the main part of it?
Yes, and then, and then savings, the guaranteed savings.
Correct.
How much for that motion?
It's been moved to the second, I recommend our contract to reflect Cedar Haven being removed. Questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you.
Good luck, Sergio, good having you aboard.
Thanks, sir.
If your hair in seventeen years doesn't go that way.
I like to laugh. Hopefully it doesn't.
Your hair's a full head of hair, that's fantastic.
Ms. Litz, if I could get your card, then we can present you.
Sure.
If you would copy me on...
Absolutely.
Then I'll keep it. I have two other, a lot of things, hold on if you're ready. Two liquid fuel fixed allocation applications here for municipalities. First one for West Lebanon Township, like the line painting, stop bars, and, sorry, line painting at stop bars on North Twenty-Fifth Street at a cost of seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, which is the amount of their fixed allocation request. And in Annville Township, they would like to use theirs for general maintenance for four thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which is the...
Could you repeat that, seven hundred and sixty-seven?
Four thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, Annville Township.
Make a motion to approve the liquid fuels applications as presented.
Second?
It's been moved to the second, I recommend those allocations, questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Okay? Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, you didn't have a keynote?
No.
Oh, so the two was the two...
Those are the two things, yeah. We stand adjourned, thank you all.